...to create that degree of fidelity. We're talking about sensors and so on. And I guess where I have some concerns, that many of the images that we see commonly in this committee and even in open source, the resolution and the clarity that would allow a robust technical intelligence analysis is challenging. So is AIMSOG prepared to address the quality and quantity of data collected on UAP to advance intelligence collection? And do you have the adequate sensors you need to collect that high-quality data?
One of the lines of effort that we have is looking at our sensor capabilities and to understand whether or not, as the videos show that Mr. Bray displayed, sometimes it's very fleeting data that we have on some of these objects. And we want to make sure that, one, our systems are calibrated to actually be able to collect on the objects. You know, our sensors today are calibrated for specific things. We want to make sure to calibrate it for things of this nature, things of this size, things of this velocity, if I can use that term. We want to make sure that, once we have that, that that data is stored in some standardized method that we can then extract and that we can feed into our system real time. So we do not like want this to take some prolonged period of time for us to get that data. But our goal is absolutely to have that high-fidelity information that we get from all sensors. And we want to be able to integrate that with what we may have off of ground-based sensors. So whatever you may have on a platform, whatever you may have on the ground, whatever we may have from other sensors that we may have in different domains, we want to be able to integrate that all and get this integrated picture as we would, as I said, with any other unidentified objects or things that we are tracking as a part of our normal intelligence responsibilities.
Thank you. Last question, Mr. Bray. If you would, I'm a Navy pilot. I've encountered a UAP. Walk me through the reporting protocol once I see something that I think needs reported.
The first thing that that aviator would do after landing is a part of their normal debriefing, is they would contact their intelligence officer. Their intelligence officer would then walk them through, first filing a, first, actually, data preservation to ensure that whatever sensor data may be on the aircraft, that we preserve that so that it's available for later analysis. Second, they would actually fill out a form that includes details like where they were operating, altitudes they were operating, speeds, what they observed, whatever sensor data they may have recorded from that. And then that report is filed. It goes two places. One, it goes through the operational chain of command so that operational units are aware of what's being observed, and also to the UAP task force so that they can take that data, database it, and quite often have individuals from the task force contact the aviator and ask them additional questions if there were things that weren't clear in the report. That then goes into a database where we begin to compare it with other observations that we have, again, comparing for locations, comparing for altitude, speeds, shapes, if any RF emissions were detected from the platform, all of that, so that we can try to reach some conclusions on that.
Thank you. You're back.
Gentleman yields back. Chairman Schiff.
Thanks, Chairman. Mr. Bray, can you rerun that first image? It looked like it was outside of a plane window. And if you wouldn't mind going up to the screen and tell us what we're seeing. Not that you can necessarily tell us what we're seeing, but explain what we should be looking at in that first image.
Absolutely. And Alexi, what I'll ask is if you can stop it at a certain point.
And are we looking outside of a civilian aircraft window? Is that what we're looking at?
You're looking outside a U.S. Navy airplane.
Okay.
And this is great to show how difficult the analysis is. Go just a little farther forward, Alexi. As you can see, flying to a P as far as you may. What you'll find eventually on this window by the right frame is we're literally out on right here, the airable object that passes right through here, as right there, the aircraft is leaving through that conversion quadrille. And is a...
Is that it right there?
Yes.
Can you point to the screen again, what we're supposed to be looking at?
Okay.
Okay, if you could stop that frame.
Yeah, that's not the one.
That was not the one.
Alexi, just a quick play. As you can see, coming up right here, is a narrow one, a backer. Spherical object, right here, zoomed by the window, right in this area, right there. There we go. Could you see that part right there again, what by? I think we're having a hard time stopping it in the right spot.
Okay.
So as you can see, it's difficult. The timing of our issues here is the laptop we're working with is not as easy for stopping that video in the right spot.
We'll describe what we have seen in that. What are we observing?
What you see here is aircraft that is operating in a U.S. Navy training range that has observed spherical objects in that area. And as they fly by it, they take a video. You see a, it looks reflective in this video, somewhat reflective, and it quickly passes by the cockpit of the aircraft.
And is this one of the phenomena that we can't explain?
I do not have an explanation for what this specific object is.
And is this one of the situations where it is, that's the object that we're looking at right there? Thank you. And is this a situation where it was observed by the pilot and it was also recorded by the aircraft's instruments?
We'll talk about the multi-sensor part in a later session. But in this case, we have at least that.
In the Director of National Intelligence 2021 unclassified report, the DOD and I reported 144 UAPs between 2004 and 2021, 80% of which were recorded on multiple instruments. And I take it with respect to some of those, you had the pilot, a pilot seeing them, it was observed by a pilot, and you had multiple instruments recording it. So you really have three sensors, the human sensor and two technical sensors detecting the object, is that?
For the majority of incidents that we had in the last year's report, the majority had multi-sensor data. When I talk about the 400 reports that we have now, that number will certainly go down because a lot of those new reports that we have are actually historic reports that are narrative-based. So that percentage will go down just as a factor of the fact that the destigmatization has resulted in more narrative reports.
And that's the object we're looking at right there now, right?
That's it, right there.
Okay. Last year's report also said that of those 144, 18 of them reportedly appeared to exhibit unusual flight characteristics, appear to demonstrate advanced technology, and some of them appeared to remain stationary in winds aloft, move against the wind, maneuver abruptly, or move at considerable speed without discernible means of propulsion. That's pretty intriguing. And if you're able to answer this in this setting, are we aware of any foreign adversary capable of moving objects without any discernible means of propulsion?
I think I would, without discernible means of propulsion, I would say that we're not aware of any adversary that can move an object without discernible means of propulsion. The question then becomes, in many of these cases where we don't have a discernible mean of propulsion in the data that we have, in some cases, there is likely sensor artifacts that may be hiding some of that. There's certainly some degree of something that looks like signature management that we have seen from some of these UAP. But I would caution, I would simply say that there are a number of events in which we do not have an explanation, in which, and there are a small handful in which there are flight characteristics or signature management that we can't explain with the data that we have. We'll continue, those are obviously the ones that are of most interest to us. Earlier, when we asked about how you avoid technological surprise, the biggest way you avoid technological surprise is by collecting this type of data and by importantly calibrating the assumptions that you go into with how you do that analysis. I'll tell you, within the UAP task force, we have one basic assumption, and that is that generally speaking, generally speaking, our sensors operate as designed. And we make that assumption because many times these are multi-sensor collections. We make no assumptions about the origin of this, or that there may or may not be some sort of technology that we don't understand. That's, I think, the key to avoiding technological surprises by calibrating those assumptions.
And finally, with respect to the second two videos showing the small triangles, the hypothesis is that those are commercial drones that, because of the use of night-vision goggles, appear like triangles? Is that the operating assessment?
Some type of drone, some type of unmanned aerial system, and it is simply that that light source resolves itself through the night-vision goggles onto the SLR camera as a triangle.
And have we, in order to prove that hypothesis, flown a drone and observed it with that same technology to see whether we can reproduce the effect?
The UAP task force is aware of studies that have done that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Dr. Winstrup.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here. My first question is, through this process where there's been sightings, have the sightings been stationary, or have they always been sighted from a moving object, from a plane or a ship that may be moving? Have these reports ever come from a stationary object being observed in the sky?
The UAP task force does have reports from stationary, reports from a stationary observer.
Because there's a difference, observing something when you're moving as well, it's physics, right? That's why I asked that question. Are we capable, or have we made any breakthroughs, or anyone made any breakthroughs, to be able to cite something and make some determination at all of its composition, whether it's a solid or a gas? Is there any such capability?
From...
Not asking what, I just...
Right. From some of the returns, I mean, it's clear that the majority, well, it's clear that many of the observations we have are physical objects from the sensor data that we have.
Well, gas is physical, is a physical object. It can be. And so, and you see where I'm going with this? I'm trying to determine what it is we're looking at, so if we can decide if something is a solid or a gas, and if there'd been any conclusion on its capabilities, like its capabilities of movement, of turning, going, you know, 180 degrees or 90-degree turn, anything along that line that we've been able to determine?
Within the, and again, I should point out that, you know, that there is not a single explanation for UAP. They make up, there are a lot of different things that are unidentified air phenomena.
Basically, we really don't know much on that. That's all I'm trying to get at. And I'm pleased that you have protocol right now for our military. But are there any non-military reports coming forward of similar events, or is it all coming from military?
The UAP task force has a very good working relationship with the FAA. They have very good working relationship with other parts of the U.S. government so that we can ingest reports from...
Do we have any reports, non-military?
Yes.
Thank you. That's my question. And do we need to put out protocol for civilians that may be in that arena, like through FAA? Do you think that would be appropriate and helpful?
I think standardized reporting, without a doubt, is key to helping us get to ascertain what some of these are.
I think it would be important as well. Do we, there are other people besides the U.S. that have had these experiences and reported them? Is that correct?
There are. That's correct.
Is it all of our allies, or is it allies and adversaries? What have we learned publicly?
So some of that, I think, sir, we'll save for closed session.
Well, that goes to my next question. Publicly, have others made anything which would not have to be considered closed? I don't want you to answer what they've said, necessarily.
Allies have seen these. China has established its own version of a UAP task force, so clearly a number of countries have observations of things in the airspace that they can't identify.
And do we share data with some, with all? Are they sharing with us?
We share data with some, and some share data with us.
But not necessarily all that have publicly reported something?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think that's an important thing, and for the other session, actually, that we don't discuss that now. Because, you know, obviously, something like this can be a national security challenge for us, no doubt about it. If they're developed by an adversary through some breakthrough technology, they can be very disruptive to our military actions, or at least serve as a distraction. So my caution would be, be careful who we share our data with, and don't necessarily trust some of the data we may get from someone else. And with that, I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Mr. Himes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the objectives of this open hearing is to try to erode some of the stigma that attaches to, in particular, our military men and women reporting this. It's obviously really very serious because should one of our adversaries have developed a technology that we don't know about, that we need to know about it yesterday, and obviously, any sort of stigma that prevents our military from reporting this data as comprehensively as possible is a national security threat. So I really just have two questions in the service of that goal. The first is, the chairman asked that we run that video again. Most people, when they see a video, we're all used to seeing things from a car, seeing things from a sidewalk. Very few people have the experience of observing something through night-vision goggles at Mach 1.5. So just talk for a minute about, if you would, whichever view is most appropriate, how radically different observation is at high speed and three dimension than it is for most of us who walk around and drive cars?
So the first thing I think that's important to note about this is there are lots of things, when you are moving very fast and an object is between you and a stationary reference point, like the ground, it gives a lot of different impressions about how quickly something is or isn't moving. And it actually means that it is a challenge, especially with narrative-based data, to get a lot of information on that. That's why the sensor data is so important, because things do happen very quickly, as you see there. And sometimes things that happen very quickly, something may be moving very slow. That aircraft is moving quite fast. How fast that object is moving that goes by is probably very slow.
So I guess my point is that an observation, either a visual observation or a electronic observation, infrared or whatever, looks radically different than it does to most people. Even instruments, instruments are on gimbals and that sort of thing, so that creates a very unusual view to, again, those of us who are used to seeing things in two dimensions largely. Second question, I think, Mr. Bray, you said something that I want to unpack a little bit. A number of these UAPs, you said, "We can't explain." Again, in the service of sort of reducing speculation and conspiracy theories, "we can't explain" can range from a visual observation that was distant on a foggy night, we don't know what it is, to we've found an organic material that we can't identify, right? Those are radically different worlds. So when you say "we can't explain," give the public a little bit better sense of where on that spectrum of "we can't explain" we are. Are we holding materials, organic or inorganic, that we don't know about? Are we, you know, picking up emanations that are something other than light or infrared that could be deemed to be communications? Give us a sense for what you mean when you say "we can't explain."
Sure. When I say "we can't explain," I mean exactly as you described there, that there is a lot of information, like the video that we showed, in which there's simply too little data to create a reasonable explanation. There are a small handful of cases in which we have more data that our analysis simply hasn't been able to fully pull together a picture of what happened. And those are the cases where we talk about where we see some indications of flight characteristics or signature management that are not what we had expected. When it comes to material that we have, we have no material, we have detected no emanations within the UAP task force that is, that would suggest it's anything non-terrestrial in origin. So there's, when I say "unexplained," I mean everything from too little data to we simply, the data that we have doesn't point us towards an explanation. But we'll go wherever the data takes us. Again, we've made no assumptions about what this is or isn't. We're committed to understanding these, and so we'll go wherever that data takes us.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And so I think it bears emphasis. When you say "we can't explain," everything that you can't explain is in a bucket called "data." Is that correct? And that would mean data collected by sensors, visual observations, everything that "we can't explain" quote-unquote is in a bucket called "data"?
Right. A narrative report from the early 2000s, if it just had a little bit of information on it, would be in our database and it would be unresolved.
I would add to that, it's insufficient data. I mean, that's one of the challenges we have. Insufficient data, either on the event itself, the object itself, or insufficient data or plug-in with some other organization or agency that may have had something in that space at that time. So it's a data issue that we're facing in many of these instances, Congressman.
Understood. Thank you very much. You yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for allowing me to join this hearing. I really appreciate the witness's testimony. Mr. Multry, as the chairman mentioned, DOD had initiative to study UFOs in the 1960s called Project Blue Book. It's also been well-reported in our briefing and in other places that we have more recent projects, specifically ATIP. Could you describe any other initiatives that the DOD or DOD contractors have managed after Project Blue Book ended and prior to ATIP beginning? Did anything also predate Project Blue Book?
So I can't speak to what may have predated Project Blue Book. I mean, of course, there's Roswell and all these other things that people have talked about over the years. I'm familiar with Blue Book. I'm familiar with ATIP. I haven't seen other documented studies that have been done by DOD in that regard.
So you're not aware of anything in between Project Blue Book and ATIP?
Not aware of anything that's official that was done in between those two. Hasn't been brought to my attention.
Okay. Additionally, are you aware of any other DOD or DOD contract programs focused on UAPs from a technological engineering perspective? And by that, I mean, are you aware of any technology initiatives focused on this topic, other than initiatives focused on the individual case investigations?
I am not aware of any contractual programs that are focused on any, anything related to this, other than what we are doing in the Navy task force and what we are about to launch in terms of our effort.
Same question for you, Mr. Bray.
Same answer, not aware of anything outside what we are doing in the UAP task force.
So just to confirm, you're not aware of any technology or engineering resources that have been focused on these efforts besides what we've mentioned today?
Once again, I'll say no contractual or programmatic efforts that are involved. The reason why I qualify that way...
Explain?
Yeah, let me qualify it that way. I can't speak to what people may be looking at in the department. Somebody says, "I'm looking at something, I'm looking at something that may be unidentified," and I can't speak to that, speak to official programs that we have on the record.
It's also been reported that there have been UAP observed and interacting with and flying over sensitive military facilities, particularly, not just ranges, but some facilities housing our strategic nuclear forces. One such incident allegedly occurred at Malmstrom Air Force Base, in which 10 of our nuclear ICBMs were rendered inoperable. At the same time, a glowing red orb was observed overhead. I'm not commenting on the accuracy of this. I'm simply asking you whether you're aware of it and whether you have any comment on the accuracy of that report.
Let me pass that to Mr. Bray, if he's been looking at UAPs over the last three years.
That data is not within the holdings of the UAP task force.
Okay. But are you aware of the report, or that the data exists somewhere?
I have, I have heard stories. I have not seen the official data on that.
So you've just seen informal stories, no official assessment that you've done or exists within DOD that you're aware of regarding the Malmstrom incident?
All I can speak to is, you know, what's within my cognizance of the UAP task force, and we have not looked at that incident.
Well, I would say, I mean, it's a pretty high-profile incident. I don't claim to be an expert on this, but that's out there, in the ether. You're the guys investigating it. I mean, who else is doing it?
If something was officially brought to our attention, we would look at it. There are many things that are out there in the ether that aren't officially brought to our attention.
So how would it have to be officially brought to your, I'm bringing it to your attention. This is pretty official.
Sure. So we'll go back and take a look at it. But generally, there is authoritative figure that says there is an incident that occurred. We'd like you to look at this. But in terms of just tracking what may be in the media that says that something occurred at this time, at this place, there are probably a lot of leads that we would have to follow up on. I don't think we have a resource to do that right now.
Well, I don't claim to be an authoritative figure, but for what it's worth, I would like you to look into it. And if for no other reason, you could dismiss it and say this is not worth wasting resources on.
Will do.
And then finally, are you aware of a document that appeared around 2019, sometimes called the Admiral Wilson Memo or EW Notes Memo?
I am not.
You're not?
I'm not personally aware of that.
Okay. Well, this is a document in which, again, I'm not commenting on the veracity. I was hoping you would help me with that, in which the former head of DIA claims to have had a conversation with the Dr. Eric Wilson and claims to have sort of been made aware of certain contractors or DOD programs that he tried to get fuller access to and was denied access to. So you're not aware of that?
I'm not aware, Congressman.
In my 10 seconds remaining, then, I guess I just would ask Mr. Chairman unanimous consent to enter that memo into the record.
Without objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Mr. Christian Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to both of you for appearing today and for your public service. First question is, there have been no collisions between any U.S. assets in one of these UAPs, correct?
We have not had a collision. We've had at least 11 near misses, though.
And maybe we'll talk about those 11 near misses or any place where there's close proximity. I assume, or tell me if I'm wrong, there's been no attempt, there's no communications or any kind of communication signals that emanate from those objects that we've detected, correct?
That's correct.
And have we attempted to communicate with those objects?
No.
So we don't, we don't even put out an alert saying, you know, "U.S., you know, identify yourself. You are, you know, within our flight path," or something like that? We haven't said anything like that?
We've not put anything out like that. Generally speaking, what, you know, for example, in the video that we showed earlier, it appears to be something that is, you know, unmanned, appears to be something that may or may not be in controlled flight, and so we've not attempted any communication with that.
Okay. So, and I assume we've never discharged any armaments against a UAP, correct?
That's correct.
How about wreckage? Have we come across any wreckage of any kind of object that... Have we come across any wreckage of any kind of object that has now been examined by you?
The UAP Task Force doesn't have any wreckage that isn't explainable, that isn't consistent with being of terrestrial origin.
Do we have any sensors underwater to detect on submerged UAPs? Anything that is in the ocean or in the seas?
So I think that would be more appropriately addressed in closed session, sir.
I think one of the biggest questions that, that I have is, we say with a lot of probability, we say they, quote unquote, "probably do represent physical objects," close quote. When we say "probably," is that because we cannot conclusively say that they are physical objects?
In the Task Force report, when, when I say "probably represent physical objects," most of them represent physical objects. There could be some that are more of a, of a meteorological phenomena, something like that, that may not be a physical object in the, in the sense that most people think of something you could go up and touch.
But the ones where you say, "most of them represent physical objects," can you say that they are definitely, like with 100% certainty, that they are physical objects?
I can say with certainty that a number of these are physical objects.
Okay. So there, we can't rule out that some of them may not be physical objects?
Some certainly could be a sensor anomaly or something like that. Some could be.
Now, how about with regard to UAPs? We've talked about UAPs on training areas, but obviously, there's some sensor bias, I would think. We, we put sensors in training areas. How about with regards to non-training areas? Do we track what's an open source and what civilians and others have tracked, and have we found similarities to what they've observed in terms of UAPs in non-training areas to the ones that are in training areas?
The UAP Task Force has worked very hard to make sure the data set that we're working with is a, is a data set that we have very good control over that data. So we have some partnerships with FAA so that we get some of that, so we get that reporting in. But if it comes to just, you know, open source reports, or someone says that they saw something, that generally does not make it into our database.
So basically, it sounds like we have a good partnership with FAA, but apart from FAA, we don't have partnerships with other agencies or other entities that might be tracking so that we could enlarge our data set to make comparisons.
We will. So that's the goal of this next effort, will be to expand that relationship with the, with the rest of government and the interagency, so we can understand what they're seeing, what we're seeing. We can correlate on each other's holdings and hopefully resolve this.
Because I think, sorry to interrupt, but I, I think that we're, we might have a bias right now going on with regard to just reporting on UAPs being in training areas when we don't really track what's happening elsewhere. Last question, have our encounters with UAPs altered the development of our, either our offense or, offensive or defensive capabilities, or even our sensor capabilities?
We'd take that for the closed session.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. Lahud.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and want to thank the witnesses for being here today. Obviously, this topic of UAPs has attracted a lot of interest in, in people that are curious about this, this hearing today. As we talk about, and I would say there's a lot of what I would call amateur interest groups that are involved in the UAP field. My question is, when there are unsubstantiated claims or manufactured claims of UAPs or kind of false information that's put out there, what are the consequences for people that are involved with that or groups that are involved with that?
So one of the concerns that we have is that there are a lot of individuals and groups that are, are putting information out there that, that could be considered to be somewhat self-serving. We're trying to do what's in, what's in the best interest of, one, the Department of Defense, and then, two, what's in the best interest of the public, to ensure that we can put factual-based information back into the mainstream and back into the bloodstream of the reporting media that we have, so people understand what's there. It's important because we are attempting, as this hearing has drawn out, to understand, one, what may just be natural phenomenon, two, what may be sensor phenomenology or things that were happening with sensors, three, what may be legitimate counterintelligence threats to places that we have, or bases or installations, or security threats to our platforms. And anything that diverts us off of what we have with the resources that have been allocated to us, send us off in these spurious chases and hunts that are just not helpful. And they also help, well, they also contribute to the undermining of the confidence that the Congress and the American people have, that we are trying to get to the root cause of what's happening here, report on that, and then feed that back into our national security apparatus so we are able to protect the American people and our allies. So it is harmful, it is hurtful, but hopefully, if we get more information out there, we'll start to lessen the impact of some of those spurious reports.
So just taking that a step further, so that misinformation, false narratives, manufactured, so what are the consequences? Are there legal consequences? Are there examples that you can give us where people have been held accountable by this misinformation or disinformation?
I can't give you, you know, any examples where somebody's been legally held liable for putting something out there, but...
Well, I guess, what's the deterrent from people engaging in this activity?
I don't, I don't know. I, I don't have that answer. That's something that, you know, welcome the dialogue with Congress to talk about that with the members who, you know, help legislate those laws, to say, what should be the, the legal ramifications that we could use to potentially hold individuals accountable, whether it be citizens or information that might be injected into our media by other, other forces or other countries, if you will.
And in terms of DODs and, you know, review and analysis in this field, I mean, is there, is there a standard in place when it comes to UAPs? I mean, is there any guidance you look to that's codified in law or otherwise within DOD that, that kind of sets out the standards for UAPs and, and what to look for?
I think that's part of what the, the group that we're standing up now will be chartered to do. We're actually, from my organization, will be looking at policy and standards that we have to come to you and work with you to actually put in place and promulgate across our government.
Thank you. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Mr. Welch.
Thank you. I'm going to follow, I'm going to follow on the, the line of questions from Mr. Lahud. Gentlemen, what seems incredibly difficult for you is that there's two almost competing but different narratives. One is, it's, no one knows whether there's extraterrestrial life. It's a big universe, and it would be pretty presumptuous to have a hard and fast conclusion. And then, if there is, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that there is some exploration coming here. And that underlies a lot of the reports you get. I think Mr. Lahud was asking about that. People think there must be extraterrestrial life, and it's not at all beyond the pale that there would be a visit here. On the other hand, as the DOD, you have the responsibility to make sure that our national security is protected, and that if there are surveillance drones or active drones that can disable our systems, that has to be analyzed, has to be stopped. So how do you divide the, these, how do you separate your responsibilities where you get all these reports from folks who, maybe in good faith, maybe not, believe that you should be investigating every possible report of a extraterrestrial incident? I'll start with you, Mr. Multry.
Sure, indeed, Congressman, and, and thank you for the question. It's important that we, as a part of this effort, really build out the relationship that we have with others, including NASA, and for the reasons that you just pointed out. So there are elements in our government that are engaged in looking for life in other places, and they have been doing that for decades, right? They've been searching for extraterrestrial life. There are astrobiologists who have been doing this, too. We're a part of that same government, and so our goal is not to potentially cover up something if we were to find something. It's to understand what may be out there, examine what, what it may mean for us, if there are any, from a defense perspective, any national security implications or ramifications, but then to work with organizations as appropriate, if it's a weather phenomenology with NOAA, if it's a potential for extraterrestrial life or indication of extraterrestrial life with someone like NASA.
So the transparency actually is very important.
Completely.
For public consumption.
Completely.
But we're going to have a classified briefing, and without going into the details of what kinds of secrets that we can't share here, what is it, what are we protecting? I don't know if you can answer this question in this open forum, but in fact, your perception of what it is we have to, quote, protect.
So I think, right now, what's really important for us to protect is how we know certain things. So there are a lot of things that we know, whether it be about the thinking of other leaders around the world, the weapon systems that are being developed, or how we detect things that may be threats to us. Many of those things are the result of some of our most sensitive sources and methods, and we'll use those things, not just for this effort, but those same sources and methods are used to help protect us from adversaries and from others who might mean to do us harm. There aren't separate UAP sensors, there's not a, a separate UAP processing computer, there's not a separate UAP dissemination chain or whatever. So it's the same process. It's, it's the same system that we have that helps us do all that. We need to protect that because this is something that, that we're looking at, but we're sure there are going to be other things that we'll look at in the future that will need those same sensors, will need those same sources and methods to help us do. So we're protecting the fact of the, that this nation has developed capabilities that enable us to know what may be threats to us and to counter those threats before they become something of a, a national issue.
Thank you very much. I want to thank both you, Mr. Bray, and you, Mr. Multry, for your appearance today. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Gentlemen, beyond videos, is there a range of other information that the executive branch has that would be valuable to the American people while protecting sources and methods, obviously? The details of individual encounters, including the time, place, and details of an encounter? And does the AMSOG have a clear and repeatable process for considering public release as part of the process?
Chairman, currently, um...
And do you commit to building that process if it's not in place?
The UAP Task Force, you know, the, the Security Classification Guide that, that the UAP Task Force has been operating under, that I approved, really was meant to protect those sources and methods and meant to protect any knowledge that an adversary intelligence entity may gain from unders, from understanding what we're tracking, how we track it, or when we're tracking it, or if we're not. And so that has been an important piece in the balance between transparency and preserving our warfighting advantage, because the US military does train as it would fight. What I will commit to is, at least for that material that's under my authority as the Deputy Director of Naval Intelligence, for information that we have, when it does not involve sources and methods, or, and when we can, with a reasonable degree of confidence, determine that it does not pose a foreign intelligence or national security threat, and it's within my authority to do so, I commit to declassifying that. So I, I believe very much in the transparency of this, and we work very hard to balance that with our national security needs.
And I'll just add, Congressman, just over the last three, four months, I think that the, the intelligence community and the national defense apparatus have disclosed more information on various events than it has in, in probably, see, the, the previous 10 years. You have our commitment to work closely with the Director of National Intelligence and others in the declassification and downgrading of intel apparatus to ensure that we can get whatever information that we can out to the American people and to the public at large.
Greatly appreciated, sir. Ranking Member Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Representative Stefanik is en route, I believe, just real quickly, but in the interim, if I could, if you'll indulge me, I just have one, a couple of real small questions. One is, do we have an example, can you cite a, a specific example of an object that can't be explained as having been human-made or natural?
I mean, the, the, the example that, that I would say that we, that is still unresolved, that I think everyone understands quite well, is the 2004 incident from, from Nimitz. We have data on that, and it simply remains unresolved. Does not mean it resolves to being something, right, that is easily explainable or difficulty, or, well, obviously, it resolves to being something that is difficult to explain. But I, I can't point to something that definitively was not man-made, but I can point to a number of examples in which remain unresolved.
Gotcha. With regard to videos that have appeared in open source channels, for example, the Tic Tac video, does AMSOG maintain control of videos, and how do you prevent leaks of potentially classified videos or other material?
So the AMSOG, as we established at organization, we will have a, a process for classified and compartmented holdings, and we will find a way of getting positive control over those. We have our sensitive access programs and special access programs that allow us to put what we call SAPs around things, and then there's controlled access programs that allow us to put caps around things. So we'll have that in place. Our goal will be ensuring that we're sharing that with the appropriate analysts and the appropriate exploiters, if you will, who can look at that data, too. What we don't want to do is bring something into a DOD database or a DOD holding and then have somebody wrap us around it. It's not available to those who really need to look at it and to exploit it. And that's one of the reasons we're establishing relationships with the interagency, with the IC and others to be able to do that, sir. But we will do our best to maintain positive control over the materials that we have within our holdings.
Thank you.
Chairman Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just going back to the 2021 report, you know, under the category of "UAP appear to demonstrate advanced technology," those 18 incidents in which some of the UAP appear to remain stationary, winds aloft, move against the wind, maneuver abruptly, or move at considerable speed without discernible means of propulsion. It goes on to say, "In a small number of cases, military aircraft systems processed radio frequency energy associated with UAP sightings." I couldn't tell from that whether that small number of cases was a part of the subset of 18. That is, among the 18 which appeared to move with unusual pattern or flight characteristics, did some of those also emit radio frequency energy?
I would have to check with our UAP Task Force on that. I, I believe, without getting into specifics that we can do in the, in the closed session, at least some that we have detected RF emissions from were not behaving oddly otherwise.
And, and the significance of measuring that radio frequency energy is what? That we suspect that this was a, some form of aircraft in which there were radio transmissions?
The biggest thing that you're looking for there is any indication of, of an effort to jam whatever sensors that we may have looking at it.
But I would also, also add to that, that radio frequency, as you know, Congressman, is used to control various platforms, too. So the fact of emanations coming off of any platform, whether it be a UAV or another platform, could be radio frequency activity related to that entity transmitting out or something transmitting to that platform. And of course, we have a sensitivity with our airborne platforms of picking it up, which is one of the reasons that we try to prevent people from using their cell phones on airplanes and things like that. It's very sensitive to RF emanation. So that's a part of what we'll be looking at in the AMSOG. What is this? Is this something that we can collect on, and can we start to characterize the signaling environment around the emanations that may be coming off of some of these UAPs?
So that, that energy, then, that was recorded could be either an effort to jam or it could be an effort to control a UAV, or any other communication with that craft?
I would say that's accurate.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. As the ODNI report makes clear, one possible explanation for UAPs is that we are detecting US aircraft, either secret air programs or even test prototypes. I won't ask you in this setting, obviously, to describe any secret DOD programs. That said, I do want to make sure the US government isn't chasing its own tail. Firstly, do you have a clear and repeatable process to check with compartmented programs about whether a UAP sighting is attributable to a US aircraft? Secondly, do, does the AMSOG staff have the clearances and read-ons that... Secondly, do, does the AMSOG staff have the clearances and read-ons that they need to investigate all of these incidents? And, and, and thirdly, when your staff cannot be read on, are your questions to those who are read on even being answered?
So I'll start, and then I'll, I'll pass that to, to Mr. Bray. So we're very conscious of the potential blue-on-blue issue or U.S. on U.S., and so we've established relationships with organizations and entities that, that are potentially flying or developing platforms for their own interests, if you will, and our goal is to continue, and we have a repeatable process, I think we've had that process for some time, to de-conflict activities that we may have, to ensure that we are not potentially reporting on something that may be a developmental platform or a U.S. operational platform that is performing either testing or performing a mission. So we will have that in place, we've already had those discussions with organizations and entities. We want to ensure that we're protecting their equities, we want to ensure that we're protecting their sources and methods while also getting at what we have here, we want to be able to de-conflict those.
Absolutely. The UAP Task Force has had a, a process in place to work with other elements of the Department of Defense and other elements of the government to ensure that, that there's an, as simple a way as possible to de-conflict those. And when we reference that in the, in the report, I should say that we were simply accounting for the fact that there could possibly be one or two data points that had, that had leaked through, but we were quite confident that was not the explanation.
How, how, how are you all liaising with Space Command? Specifically, how are you partnering with the parts of the U.S. Space Command responsible for space domain awareness? And how, if at all, are you partnering with the Space Force to analyze UAPs?
The UAP Task Force has, has a very good relationship with Space Force, as it does with the rest of the Department of Defense. We have pulled analysts in from Space Force to ensure that, that we're availing ourselves of that expertise, as well as any, any other material they may have that would be helpful.
And Congressman, as you know, Space Force and Space Command, they, they have responsibility for space domain awareness. So what we've done, we coordinated with, with Space Force, we coordinated with their J-2, and she is on board in terms of helping us plug into what they have and for us to have this interactive exchange of information and data. And we're doing that with all the services, not just with Space Force or Space Command.
Thank you, sir. Ranking Member, any additional questions? All right, Chairman Schiff. All right, with that, I want to thank you all for, for taking the time out. I also want to thank my colleagues on both sides of the aisle for participating in this very historical and important hearing. I think it's one of the few times we can demonstrate some degree of bipartisanship around UAPs and UFOs, so I love it, appreciate it, thank you. And we will see you all, we will recess this hearing for the moment and return in a closed session at noon.